Let's stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance. For allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic of which we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with a just and moral throne, and with a just and moral. I'd like to introduce Nancy Mello, or please be seated. I'm just standing because it's easier for me to stand.
But if...
Our town court is swearing our two members.
So if Ms. Pollish and Mr. Birbidi at least stand, and you can repeat the oath after me. And, Ms. Pollish?
Ms. Pollish, pardon.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support, enforce, and abide
That I will support, enforce, and abide.
by the Constitution and laws
By the Constitution and laws.
of the United States of America
Of the United States of America.
and of the State of Rhode Island
and of the State of Rhode Island.
that I will, in all respects
that I will, in all respects
observe the provisions of the Charter
observe the provisions of the Charter
and ordinances of the Town of Tiverton
and ordinances of the Town of Tiverton.
and will faithfully discharge the duties
and will faithfully discharge the duties
as a member of the school committee
as a member of the school committee.
for the Town of Tiverton
for the Town of Tiverton.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations, you have been made.
As part of the procedural issues here, we need, the committee needs to nominate a chair person. And once that person is selected, I can turn the meeting over to...
Did you do that, or was that a...
And I'd be happy to second it. I did just want to check, Sally has worked very hard for us for four years. And you've done more than your fair share. But if, are you ready and willing to do that for us for another two years? Thank you very much. That's all I needed to hear.
There's a second, any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, congratulations, Mrs. Black.
Thank you. I left my gavel on the car just in case, so everybody behave. Okay, now we'll have a nominations for a vice chair, please.
I will nominate, once again, Carol Herman, who has done a fabulous job along your side.
Can I second that? Anybody else? Any other nominations? All those in favor? Thank you very much.
And so we sit in our same seats. Pass out your name tags.
I told Elaine, put those over there till we find out what's going on. Okay, thank you. Now we have... Now we have somebody for the sick bank. Two people, please, for the sick bank.
Can we nominate others?
We just put it on, I mean, if people were doing it now, would still like to do it. We just do this on every two years.
My recollection is it's myself, and...
Is it Sally? It's you, I think.
Is it? Because we never met in the last year, did we? Did we meet once?
On the sick bank? No.
Oh, maybe we did.
That's a good one, then.
Do I be on the sick bank?
I know I'm on it, and I know I went to the meeting. I remember who else was there.
Yeah, well, then, maybe you're right. And we haven't had it since you first got on.
No, no, we had, we had one.
One, that's why we...
Well, that's a good committee, once in two years.
I like that one. Is that good, Carol?
Yep, that's good.
Okay.
We did a great job, Jerry.
By consensus.
The next one is tech ed. And I usually do that one if no one else wants to do it.
That's fine, Sally.
Policy, we have two.
I'd like to continue doing that.
Yes, you do a wonderful job with that.
And I'm happy to stay on that as well.
That's a good job, yeah, thank you. And somebody for legislation? That was Yuliani?
I'll do that, since you did it for Ryaz.
You did a good job with that, keeping us informed.
There we go.
And appointment of the school committee clerk?
I would like to reappoint Elaine.
Second?
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine, for everything you do, keeping everyone together. Appointment of a school committee attorney?
I'll make a motion that we reappoint, what's Robinson? Chapman, do we need that?
No, just Attorney Robinson's office.
Okay, so Stephen Robinson's office.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Liaison to Town Council, I'd like to do that. Unless anyone else wants to stay up till midnight on Monday night, it's up to you.
Nominate Mrs. Black?
Second, quickly, before she changes her mind.
Thank you, Denise.
Sally, my consensus?
Okay, thank you.
Sally, my consensus.
And health and wellness. That's Jerry, Jerry and I, Dr. Larkin.
Okay.
And our first meeting will be in December. I'll be letting you know.
Okay.
Okay, please do.
Thank you.
It's easy when you have all the sense.
Yeah, that's nice, thank you. So now we'll go into the UCOA 2013. Mr. Eric?
Yeah, we've talked about this at different meetings. This meeting's dedicated, we said several months ago that we're going to have a meeting just dedicated to looking at our UCOA accounts for 12, 13, 14 years. I think we provided all the data that everybody requested. So we'll, with a specific, for folks at home, with a specific focus on our subject areas. Because the actual UCOA count is 79 pages. We've taken pieces of that report out for the purposes of this discussion. And we've also provided, because Dr. Larkin asked, again, at one of those meetings, we'll be talking about this, for a breakdown of special ed expenses as to where we spend all our money for special ed. And what in a format that we use for our budget. Do you have that also included in your backup documents? It would be this, right here, looks like this, and this right here. So I'll just turn it over to the members, and try to answer your questions.
I'll jump in. Part of the reason, you guys know I've been putting this on for several years. And part of the reason is because I was really excited when they started doing the UCOA data because not only is this a great way for our community to know what we're spending, but it's a great way for us to know what we're spending. And I kind of think, before you start adding, you need to know where you're spending now. So that's why I've always recommended that we start with this. And now that we've had, UCOAs had, I think, four years, we can be pretty, we can be confident that it's pretty reliable throughout the districts. So what I kind of did, and I'll just jump in, and, I mean, sort of tell you what I did. I was kind of looking at, we have roughly about 1,800 kids. So I was looking for variances that were about 100 per student, which would roughly be about 180,000, which is kind of two teachers. So I just went through, and I looked at the average focusing on the suburban, which is what we are. I just kind of went through, and sort of to the side, you know, things that were over that $100 mark, or that $100s per pupil.
Variance, yeah.
Variance, yep. General ed, all of this was under 100. Guidance, it's about 252 over that average. There was nothing else on that page. Went to the next page. 14 industrial arts vocational ed is about 117 over the average. Math is about 228 under the average. Natural sciences is about 215 under the average. Social sciences is about, is 112 under the average. I sort of left off special ed because we're talking about it in the second section. It's the next agenda item. And then non-instruction was about 345 over the average. So that was kind of my first cut. And, you know, sort of what I was looking at for material, you know, just what I felt was material. Certainly, you could go deeper, but that was sort of my first, that's what I was looking at.
And that sort of gives us a big picture. If we, if we step back, where we're over and under. And so my question would be for our superintendent. Given those current allocations, do you feel we should, for the most part, maintain those current allocations? Or would you like to see some reallocation of funds, given our current needs?
I certainly would like to see, you know, more money put towards our core academic areas, if those available to us. Currently, right now, you know, in the areas that were over, guidance is one that Deb mentioned, are also over. In nursing, if you dug down deeper, that's, that's over the average. Tech ed is slightly above, as Deb mentioned. And before we get into any specifics, I think what it shows with guidance under the nursing and tech ed is that we, as a community, held on to those items. We haven't really added any new staff, gosh, in the last six, eight years, as far as additional teachers, you know, the next extra English teacher or an extra science teacher. Because our population numbers have remained relatively constant, we had to hire an elementary teacher, you know, last year because of that bubble class that we had. But for the most part, our numbers have been, student enrollment's been the same, so we haven't added anything to our budget. But we've also had budget constraints outside drivers, as you know. So that's why, you know, if you could go back three years to when we did this, while the number actually might be a little different, I think you'd see those same areas still over, because that's structurally where our budget is. You know, we can talk about, you know, guidance. That's one of the areas that obviously is above the state average. And special education is a second, that's actually the biggest driver in our budget when you look at the subject areas. And I don't want to get into special ed because it's got to be a separate item, so we can talk about that that way.
And that, I don't know, the non-instruction, I think we're going to need more detail, because it's kind of hard to see.
Right, because again, as Doug has so patiently explained to me, when you cut this, depending on what's page you're looking at, it shows you a different, not a different picture, but you can go deeper down. Non-instruction, again, transportation, that's, that's a big driver. That's our transportation budget. That's not our special ed transportation budget. That's transportation, you know, custodians, heat, retiree benefits. If you looked at that line separately, dug down, you'd find that we're above the state average there, even though we're a small district. We do pay above the average there, based on previous contracts that have been...
If you want to dig into non-instruction, here's...
And we don't have to do it tonight.
Oh, all right, that's fine.
I'm just saying that, yeah, that's something I think we're going to need more detail on, because it's not clear.
And again, not to, again, because this is such a vast report.
Right.
You know, that's, this initial, is an initial conversation. We traded some emails, Deb and I, about just trying to get a handle on what it is that we will look at. We can find anything, as long as we know where to, you know, what to look for, and we can present that data. But I would certainly like to have more, especially in science and math, if we could reallocate, but yet not hurt our programming, you know, that we have currently.
Well, where do you think we could reallocate it from, without having much of an impact?
Well, if I, to be honest with you, I think this, I would have, you know, that's, I gave, this is representative of the budget I think we need. So I wouldn't want to cut anything else. I mean, if I wanted to cut something for Rob Peter to pay Paul, I already would have presented that to you, I mean, in previous budgets. In guidance, for example, philosophically, we held to two guidance councils at the elementary levels. Two, we added one at the middle school. For the longest time, it was just one. And we've had four at the high school. I've been here since 1998 in some capacity. We've always had three counselors and a director of guidance. And before that, the director, there was no director of guidance prior to 98. It was an administrative position. My predecessor eliminated that position and created the director of guidance. So the format that you see here is something that's been in place for the previous 16 years.
Yeah, I went back, I went back to the UCOA data till 2009. And this pretty much represents our spending pattern since at least then. I think the question for the school committee members is, one of the three, three things we do that are important. We hire the superintendent, we set policy, and we set the budget. So the question for each of us is, do we want to give our superintendent direction to not necessarily, you know, specifics, but if we want to see more spent on math and naturals, and naturals and science? Because when you look at 228, you look at 215, that's four positions. That's four teaching positions. If you look at it, 80,000 is about a position. That's four teaching positions short. And if we're thinking that we would like to see more resources in those areas, that's up to us to give that direction to our superintendent. If everyone's fine with how it is, then we need to give him that direction as well.
And I have to say, looking at the fact that we spend almost $1,000 more per pupil than the suburban average, I don't feel I can justify to taxpayers an increase to fund additional positions, as opposed to reallocating current funds.
And just, and I don't disagree, but that's what we've been doing.
Right.
We haven't been adding for years. I mean, I agree. We've always, we've always, you know, we don't have. I mean, the question, Deb phrased it pretty clearly. What direction do you want us to go? The direction that you see here, and Deb mentioned, the spending pattern has been consistent. And that's because that's what, you know, through various budget building, you know, over the years, that's what has been agreed to over the years, as far as what we seek. So...
What was that, Jan?
We're the suburban maximum. No, we are the suburban maximum
We are the maximum.
in guidance.
Yeah, I see.
Yep. We spend more than any other suburban district on guidance. And that's in addition to our full-time nurses.
And again, as we talk about guidance, again, not to, because we concern ourselves with our district. And it's just, just food for thought. Depending on how other districts have guidance. For example, some districts don't have a director of guidance. They don't have one at all. Others have administrators as a director of guidance. So, and they also have social workers in other districts.
But that would be in that non-instruction line. And we're over in that, too.
But, again, I'm just saying, when we're looking at guidance, there's different, you know, I mean, some districts have one guidance counselor for one, I'm sorry, for two or three schools. It's really what the committee feels, you know, we need to have there.
Well, yeah. I mean, I just, you know, I think ELA, we're a little under. We're like 62, we're like one position under. But math and science just jumps out at you that I just don't, I don't think, you know, we've been spending this way for five years, and probably longer. And is that really, you know, what we want to be doing? Should we have, you know, more coding? Should we have more, you know, should we be, we be, some of the things they talked about at this conference we were at. Should we be thinking about, you know, having our engineering and tech combined with math and science? Should we be talking about having librarians teaching technology and digital literacy, which they talked about a lot? So it's really just, you know, you're right, this has been our pattern. But I think now is the time, when we're looking at this UCOA data, to say, either let's continue this pattern, or no, we really feel there needs to be a shift, and we need to shift money into math and science. And then it'll be up to our superintendent to find out, find where that's going to come from.
Nick, I just, we do realize that wherever it comes from, it's going to hurt or reduce somewhere else.
But that's, but that's the reality of money.
Right. I understand the reality of money. I'm just saying, so when I bring it up, if that's the direction where the committee wants to go to,
Right.
it's going to, you know...
Right, because, and it'll be up to us to decide, yes, we support that, or no, we don't, and bring us some other place to cut it. I mean, that's the discussion.
Can you work with, through me?
Yeah.
I don't understand intuitively how you're calculating a position or a half.
Oh, about $90,000. So $10 a student, I mean...
$100 a student, times the number of students up at the top of 1793. And I just rounded that to 1,800. If you take 1,800 students, times $100 variance, that's 180,000.
Which is about two positions.
Yeah. Right. That's how I'm looking at it.
So every time there's $100 variance between...
That means that's two positions.
Either the max or the minimum, or the average.
Yes.
You're thinking that's a, that's a two position in our faculty
Roughly, that's about what it is.
For that subject area.
Yep. Now, in that, you know, that's, that's, that's the subject that you had to remember. Elementary pretty much ends up in gen ed. Because they're not broken out that way. But we're right, right on target for that. So that's how I approached it. I said, well, it's two teachers. But like Bill said, this does represent our traditional spending. But the question for us is, does it represent where we want to spend going forward? So, does it?
Question.
Jan?
No, I think we have to look at some of these things, because when we look at guidance, do we, what are we getting for this basically Cadillac funding here?
But some of this, there's, there are things buried in guidance that would pop up somewhere else. Depending, it sounds like we are designating as guidance things that might be...
No, that's not what he said.
No.
No, those are guidance. You provided a list.
It's the dollars that you see that's...
That's guidance.
Five percent of its sales, positions.
What he said is, other people may have additional guidance expenses that they have buried down in non-instruction, like a...
Other different, in other words, it's structured a little differently in other districts, so it would be put somewhere else. But ours is, ours is the, you know, the rest.
Right. But that's why I want to look at that number, too, because we're over there as well.
What about, what about taking, finding out what's actually done for the money which is spent in guidance?
Well, I think we had that discussion in January. And I don't know, and maybe we do. If we want to specifically say, cut that line, or we want to just say, we want to see those two increased, and we leave it up to the superintendent to figure out where that's going to be, and come back and make recommendations. And if we don't like those recommendations, then we say, no, bring back something else. I mean, that's, but you're right. We could also say, you know, we're at the, we're at the suburban max, and it's just, it's, it's like you, I guess your wording was, it's a Cadillac program that we just feel we can't continue. That's why we get paid the big bucks.
Some of those, some of the, some of these funding trends, they are also reflected where our students go. I feel that we can use more strength in science and math. Because I feel that compared to other districts, probably fewer of our students move in that direction.
But that may be a reflection of what we're bringing into it, too.
Well, and didn't you say, I mean, Jan, when you were saying, at the college level, you're seeing more and more need for that?
What strikes me is that the area we most underfund, according to the suburban average, is mathematics.
Is math.
And that's an area that we have identified as a focus for improvement.
True, true. That's true.
And funding, funding a teacher, I don't, I don't, you know, this is obviously an operational issue, but someone who would be in a position of, not necessarily just teaching, but providing some kind of a support in terms of math.
Sort of a math coach, yeah.
Coach, tutor, whatever you're going to call this.
Instructional coach.
Some of the recitations and all of these kind of things, to bring the whole population of the students up, so more students will be attracted to higher-level math courses, as opposed to basically sticking to basic mathematics.
Well, and these ultimately become, you have to translate these into curriculum decisions. These are not just, you know, let's just spend more money. It's, you know, what are you going to do with that?
Well, exactly.
Or not spend more money. God forbid we spend more money. That you are reallocating...
Devoting more resources.
Devoting more resources. Well, you're taking one, you know, the resources are finite, so we're shifting resources from one area to another. But ultimately, it's, it is also, you know, is, and the numbers would suggest that there's a need, but, you know, you sort of want to...
And that's exactly, that's exactly why this was developed. For that very reason. So that you can see it and go, wait a minute.
Yeah.
This doesn't reflect where we need to go. It may not reflect what we think our priorities need to be right now. And that's the very reason this was created. Because it's, you know, the numbers don't lie. They're black, they're white, you know, so...
And this is a form of guidance, because to some extent mentoring is a form of guidance.
Yeah.
This person basically can't talk about, just, you know, about career opportunities related to math and science in context of what they are doing. So I think this is a very focused intervention, of how we can actually improve or fix some of these deficiencies we have in this area.
So leaving aside the special ed, and I think we need more detail on the non-instruction, the 3365.
I'm sorry, 33, oh, that, I said...
Right, we need some more, we need some more on those two. Well, especially, we're going to talk about next, but I think we need to, we need more detail in that.
Can I, just so that we know what to reduce? What specifically would you like to see?
I, I think we're saying, perhaps, or not, that we want to see more, more resources dedicated to math and science.
No, I'm just saying, non-instruction, you, I'm sorry, I...
Oh, yep.
You were talking about non-instruction.
Oh, three, the 3365 and non-instruction, I think we need to dig down.
Kind of like what we did for the special ed?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, guidance.
Because I think, isn't there like a specific UCOA that, like, yeah? I looked at it, I just didn't.
No, you kind of...
But I don't want to overwhelm everyone, so we'll do that another night.
No, actually, we have that information. But the way I, I look at it is just jump over to total dollars. So total non-instruction, we spend 6.4 million. That is, the biggest components of it, 2 million of that are basically facilities.
Right, so let's hold off, let's look at that one. We can have it in front of us. Yeah.
I know that for a while it was...
And maybe there's room in there to shift. I mean, I don't know, but...
For a while, there was a little bit of confusion, how different school districts reported different expenses.
Yeah, that's...
Has this been clear? Pretty much, we have pretty good understanding what belongs to which category?
Yeah, especially for us.
Yes.
I think as, as previously mentioned, we've been very consistent from year to year now.
We have been. But other districts, if you compare ourselves to other districts...
Yeah, because we're measuring ourselves against the average.
Oh, yeah, it's been five years now.
It's much greater than it has been. But if you, if you look at the columns, you can see that the high and low, there's still some pretty big disparities. So that leads me to believe that not everyone is treating things exactly the same. But I'm pretty, pretty confident that the average and where we are...
The parameters are pretty good.
Right. And it's the reason we waited to do this, because we kind of wanted. And now, now's the time where it's, it's a very, it's a pretty good indicator. And I mean, there, there are going to be areas where we're above average, and we know why. Industrial art, vocational education. We've made a conscious decision to keep some of those in-house, because we believe it saves us money in the long run, because we're not sending kids to Rogers in the Met. I mean, so there are decisions in here that, that, that we've, we've made. And we just need to understand them.
And comparing our, our costs with some that maybe is zero, so that's why it looks like we're...
Sure.
I think also, is trying to get students interested or excited about science and math is one of the reasons for why we're looking into Project Lead the Way. And whether it's a offer through tech ed, or, you know, a combination of math, tech ed, teaching it, that the whole goal is to get kids of all levels interested into the science and the math areas. Because I think it's eighteen percent kids going to college go into the science and the math nationwide. So we do, just not us, but the whole country needs to bring up that number that Jan sees, you know, in his workplace.
Well, and, and remember that those, those are simply the averages that, that we're looking at. It's not, you know, they're certainly a lot higher, and a lot, you know, well, a lot higher, but those are, those are the averages we're looking. I mean, even the state averages, we're, we're, we're a lot lower than, so.
And, you know, it's a little. But, you know, it's two hundred dollars in each math, you know, more than two hundred dollars for both mathematics and natural sciences.
Which is four and a half teaching positions. It's three hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
And it's two, we're two hundred and fifty-four over in guidance.
I, you know, when we talk about that, and that direction that we want to go in, if it is reallocation, I'm not sure I can give four bodies from somewhere else to bring up, if you want like almost a dollar-for-dollar match, that's going to be hard to do.
No, it's, it's more a sort of understanding that.
Well, no, it is that. I mean, if we're going to commit to increasing spending, we have to increase spending.
Significantly, not.
Significantly, not just, yeah.
You know, that if that's the case, that you give real, I mean, that we have it, so we don't have to, you know, spin our wheels so.
Well, yeah.
So we know exactly if we want that number to come up to the average, and I need four positions, for example.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we today say there's an agreement, a consensus, that we need to spend more math and science. We still need to dig into non-instruction, and we still need to dig into special ed, and once we're through with that, if, if, if members feel that there's a specific area they would like to see reduced to move into those, maybe we could make that recommendation at that time? Is that what you're looking for?
Well, yeah, I'm looking for, in other words, if you want math, we would like to see math and science go up. My thought is, do you have an idea as to how much you'd like to see go up? In other words, so I can, because we are bound, we're balancing within our operational budget, I need to know how many dollars I need to move from one to the other. So if it's a true, you know, if we use that model that you mentioned, Deb, of, you know, two, you know, basically four teachers' worth, if, if that's the desire of the committee, I have to meet with my principals, and we have to start looking at what we offer, you know, what we have, to see how we can get there. And then, what is it going to look like once we get there?
Well, maybe that's what you do. Maybe you, maybe you see.
We have to designate the dollars first.
Maybe you see how you can get there, and come and give us some recommendations, and then we see what that looks like.
But I guess getting there, is it, is it the four positions?
I, I think I would prefer, instead of saying, okay, you're going to get four positions, what do you want to do with them? I would like to take the approach with our principals, we need to strengthen math and science instruction. How many positions and what kind of positions do you think you need additionally to make a significant difference?
Yeah, because like, maybe like Jan said, it's a coach.
Because it, it may be, you know, maybe three positions are enough, or maybe it's four and a half, and we're going to grab a half from someplace else.
The directive, if you're looking at strictly, how do we improve our math and science instruction? Is that directive, we'll, we'll think one way, and that we'd like to see this, this, and this. We'll cost, we cost that out, just so you understand how we think. We cost that out. Okay? Then it's going to have, then we can bring that back and say, in order to improve our science and math across the board, we would like, we recommend, or not recommend, we think this is the best path.
Right.
Then, there'll be a, you know, we'll have dollars associated with that path.
Right.
And then you'll have, just so that I understand as to where we're going. So that we would then bring it to you, and you'd, and we'd say, this is what we've, our best thinking is, this is the cost, and we haven't looked at what, where it's coming out of. It's, this is what we need.
Right.
And then, we have that conversation of.
Where's it coming?
How to fund it. Is that?
I think that's.
Right, right. I'm just trying to, okay? Is that okay?
That, that is how I would think of it, too, that, you know, this is the view from twenty thousand feet. It looks like we are disparate in terms of how we are supporting math and science. So with the curriculum director, with the principals, how do, what do we do to strengthen those? And, and, you know, maybe the aspiration is to be at the state average, but maybe it doesn't need to be that. Maybe we'll find out it needs to be more than that.
From twenty thousand feet, we don't see math. We don't even see.
No, exactly. But, you know, again, I would like to, you know, sort of if we are, you know.
Using that science over there.
Our consensus is that we need to allocate resources to strengthen math and science, and how would you do that? And then the next question is.
Where?
Where does it come from?
That's fine, Bill.
Yeah, that's good. No, that's fine. That's what.
Not necessarily, oh, it's four positions, or it's two positions.
That's fine, that's what.
While we don't want to micromanage, two.
Well, right.
You are the specialist in education, which you know how to effectively use resources, and what is the best way to address this issue.
So we want to see that, and then maybe next time, Doug, we want to dig into that non-instruction line, because I just can't, from looking at this, I, I can't tell.
From our, just, Deb's kind of going ahead, I just.
Sorry.
I'm back in the flow of things, back there. There's, you know, obviously, we have a meeting coming up Tuesday that's not enough time for us to.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Turn that around. So we can plan on our December meeting. You know, continue it, so that we're all clear on. Because then we have to go, you know, we're still building our budget.
Right.
But that's why we're doing it now.
We're still building it, but obviously, we're flexible where we can.
Right. And I mean, if we need to have more than, you know, if we need to have another workshop quicker on this, we should, because we need to get, make these decisions quicker, so that they can be built into a budget, because they have to be to them when, Doug?
In January, you have an initial budget.
January, I usually, usually it's January fifteenth is when it has to be submitted.
So.
I use that as the goalpost, somewhere around there. That's our preliminary. I mean, it can be just, you know, like we've done, several, a few pages, but something has to be.
But the sooner we can.
But maybe we could meet on this, I'm thinking, when's our next meeting? The eighth?
Eighteen.
No, but I mean, after that, the December eighth or ninth.
Well, the first, the second Tuesday in December.
Could we do just another workshop before then? Maybe this week in December?
The second?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, just so that we could talk about this.
Yep.
That gives us three weeks, you know, with Christmas to finalize anything, if that's okay with the community.
I, I think that's good, and as we said, we use the curriculum coordinator, the principals. As Deb said, maybe we strengthen programs, maybe we do them differently. You know, we put the engineering in with the science, and do the cross-curriculum and all those kind of things. And we have a lot of great staff that we can work with, and, but we have to move, we have to.
Welcome to Silverton, Amy.
Right?
Change everything.
No, I, I do appreciate it. I just want to say, you know, I'm glad for the twenty thousand feet reference, because it is black and white, and I love YOUCOA. I know way too much about it. I love it because it's really helpful to look at things, but we're talking about children, and eliminating or reducing funding somewhere else often causes an increase elsewhere, you know, because everyone is working hard.
But everyone else is dealing with children too, not just us. That's the nice thing about.
Absolutely.
The other districts are dealing with just as many children as we are, and they're just as special to them, and their spending's a little different. So I, I certainly don't feel like setting priorities is harming anyone.
No, there's nuance, and I think that's important to just always remember.
Which we do. Okay?
Special ed?
Yep. So, just my numbers, special ed, average, where was it? Average over the suburban average is seven-nine-seven. So that is.
And again, as you can see in the sheet that we provided on that spreadsheet, it's a breakdown of how we spend our dollars. This is our budget, but just with special ed expenses. And you can see there's three areas where our dollars go. Personal services, which is compensation.
Can you give me, are, are we dealing with these pages? Okay, could you give me a page and a line number?
Yes, one of four. Personnel services, it's in both, about a quarter is away now.
Page four?
No, one of four.
Oh, one of four, yeah.
Sped FY thirteen on the bottom left.
No, mine says sped FY twelve. I should need to get to sped FY thirteen.
Yeah, I have, I guess I have mine.
Yes, okay. Sped FY thirteen, one of four, yep.
So when you look at, when you want to look at the big view, the big picture, what drives our budget, three million, three point one million per salary, one-two for first employee benefits. And then, purchase services is seven hundred forty thousand, but the other big driver, other purchase services is two point five million, of which one point eight million of that is for out-of-district tuitions. And, you know, so those are our three, what makes up our special ed budget, these are the three big areas.
Now, again, if you look at, if you look at our seven million, six-twenty-eight, seven-forty-six, and if we go back to this by subject, that's seven, that's seven million, five-oh-four, six-seventeen. So we're close. We pretty much, most of it's captured in this number. And, and again, we're, you know, seven hundred and ninety-seven per student over times our eighteen hundred students is like, you know, one point four million dollars. And I guess this is always the disconnect for myself and Jan, who I know have talked about this before, that we're hearing that being in the region is cheaper, yet I'm not seeing it. That, that, that's just my, my head just can't wrap around that, because there are other schools in here that are part of the re, our region, and there are other schools who do it themselves, and many of them are doing it for less money. So that's, that's always the, that's the thing I can't wrap around, is. Are we doing something here? Like, for instance, tech ed, we know we offer more tech heads. Do we have more classrooms? Do we, I mean, are we doing something more that's driving that?
What drive, a big driver is our tuitions. For a district our size, we have two million, it was two and a half million dollars just two years ago, for out-of-district tuitions. That's, that's a wild card that we can't, we have trouble, you can't predict that. And we've been fortunate, because it went down a half a million dollars, because two, primarily the students matriculated out, or they left. They turned twenty-one and they need services, or they left.
So is that, would that be in this out-of-district number?
The answer is yes. That, that's why we're relatively high compared to the average on the out-of-district obligation. That's where the out-of-district sped tuitions would roll up.
But again, if you jump back a level for that out-of-district obligation, that is three million, five hundred thousand roughly, which is still, you know, a little less than half of our special ed. So what's the rest of it?
The other portions of out-of-district obligations?
No, no. Out-of-district obligations totals, three million five. If you look at what is in that number, right? Our special ed number is seven-six. So about half, you're telling me, is in here and is driving it. What's driving the other half?
The other big pieces of it is transportation, which we're relatively high, because our, we have more monitors on average.
But where, where is that? Is that up in the face-to-face teaching? I mean, where?
Are you guys talking about the same item?
Yeah.
Actually.
I have. You got to keep up.
I have this special ed line, number twenty-one, where we're spending about eight hundred dollars more than the suburban average. And then if you go to out-of-district obligations, we're spending eight hundred dollars more per student than the suburban average. So in fact, with that math, the out-of-district.
Tuitions are pretty much.
Are the excess component compared to other districts.
But what I'm saying is, if you take the eighteen hundred per pupil times the nineteen fifty-seven, that spending is three point five million dollars is all that's represented by this line. Three point five million dollars. So where's the other three point five million dollars?
Transportation is part of it. So in addition to out-of-district tuitions for sped, we have meth school and Rogers.
And where is that in this function chart?
It would be in various categories, depending on what it is, because we have transportation, we have instruction, which would be the meth.
Well, that would be face-to-face teaching, right?
Correct.
Okay.
The other.
Do you see what I'm saying, Doc? Is you're telling me that's the driver, but it's only fifty percent of the cost? So I'm trying to see, what's the driver for the rest of the cost?
And the balance is basically meth, Rogers, transportation, and EBEC gets rolled up there.
And it's in other categories?
Correct. Yeah, that's why it's difficult to jump back and forth between different slices of YOUCOA.
But you're right, Carol, that for, for at least that half of it, that, that's seven ninety-five.
Yeah, that is consistent, and that, that's the biggest driver of why out-of-district is also high.
And our out-of-district costs are higher because we have so many more students going out of district? Or because we have one or two who are going to really expensive placements out of district?
You have a number of students that go to places that cost between fifty and seventy thousand dollars. The lowest runs about thirty-five thousand dollars a year, on average. That's the low end. And the high end is about seventy thousand.
And that's unique to us versus other cities from towns?
Unique to us, because we only have, we have a small, we have about thirty students. And that's, that's, that's what it costs, what their, what their needs are.
Right.
And I don't compare, look at other districts as far as, ours is, that's a big part of our budget. And when you're trying to understand the number, that's a big part of our number, those out-of-district.
And I understand that, but what I'm saying is, every other district has those types of students too.
Maybe this would help. The state also publishes a per-pupil sped cost, which is driven in large part by the out-of-district.
Actually, they, I looked on RIDE, and they don't have it broken out that way.
I have, I have at least FY thirteen, and what it does show is, we are over the average in, in our sped per pupil, and that's being driven by the out-of-district cost. We are, you had mentioned earlier, the, our, our communities that are also in the region, and they're comparable with, with our costs, who are slightly below our per-pupil sped costs, but.
Well, no, because Middletown is thirty-four eighty-five, we're forty-one eighty-five.
But they're, but the rides number for special ed expenses, they're higher than us by about ten.
Well, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm looking at what's in here.
We're talking about the per-pupil sped published cost.
Versus the per-pupil, the sped cost.
Because they could have other expenses rolled into some of those categories as well, so.
But that's where I'm having such a hard time wrapping my head around it, is you're basically telling me that we're just super unique compared to the rest of the state and the rest of the district, that we spend one point eight million dollars more?
What I'm saying, I think.
I know you know what our costs are, but we have to, we're trying to compare to other people.
I think the best way to do it is to look at the Newport County regional budget, and you can see where our costs are, and where we're spending our money. And if we weren't part of the region, and this is part of the Portsmouth conversation, is to look at the regional cost, because we have to share in those regional costs, but, and we, we have to pay a percentage of that. But for example, our programs that we have here, that we offer our students in regional programs, we do not pay for that entire teacher. For example, at Fort Barton, there's a K-two intensive class, and it's a grade-three, four-intensive class there. While we pay for the teacher on our T-two salary, you know, on our pay scale, we don't pay the full amount. We get a re, we get rebated from the region, because it's a regional program. If we had to have those programs ourselves, which we would, because we have the students there that require the services, we would then be paying for that teacher the whole salary. And that goes through, for your shared, shared services, excuse me, your psychologist, your speech pathologist, your social workers, all the things that you see here in, in the regional costs, we would then have to pay for ourselves completely. Right now, we don't pay for their entire salaries. So whatever we're paying now, we would have to pay, you know, a little bit more. now, we would have to pay, you know, a little bit more for each person.
And that's why theoretically I would think our costs would be less than other districts that don't do that.
Here's the way I look at it, and I understand what your, your line of questioning is. For the, the children that stay in district, I think we're pretty close to the average and I think that's one of the benefits of the collaborative. Because we have a higher out-of-district number and our Sped is high, that leads me to the conclusion that our out-of-district...
Is out of whack.
Well...
Well, not, well, no, it's not out of whack. It's just, it is what it is. It's higher, you're saying.
Our children are more needier that are sent out of district than on average.
Is there any way to...
It's supported by our, our high per pupil Sped cost, but I don't know that UCOA would have a way to quantify. It doesn't get into that level of detail.
What we've been doing is we've been taking steps to try to not over-identify students. Our total number of students that receive special services, Special Ed services have dropped by 24 students over the past three years. We were at 396 and I believe we're now down to 372 students. We've increased our response to intervention programs that we have at every grade level, which is meant to identify students that are struggling with their learning in the classrooms and give teachers meaningful ways to try to help those children. Where in the past, if a child was struggling academically, well, let's, I'm not just saying Tiverton, it would be, well, let's test them for Special Ed. That used to be the default. Now with RTI, there's a process that we have to go through before you get to that testing piece, number one. So we've become more rigorous and as we, excuse me, constrict that number if we can, that will help constrict our costs. Now, I've talked to Mrs. Craig or and Doug and I have a meeting with her on Monday, or Tuesday, I believe, next week, and we're going to be looking at our caseloads and she's told me in general terms that we probably can reduce some of our staffing in those areas based on numbers. So we hope to have, when we do our budget, when we bring it to you, a smaller, you know, reduction in teaching staff and in aides. So that will also help, regardless of whether we're in the region or not, it would reduce our, our total expenditure.
Yeah, because, because that's, that's what I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around. And that's where Portsmouth went, that, that ultimately they felt like they could do the services themselves for cheaper. And that's where I'm having a hard time wrapping or wrapping my head around theoretically what you're telling me should be reflected in a reduced cost, but yet I see a higher cost by a lot.
I, I think it's important to note that. We're looking at 2013.
Can we see the out-of-district? Can we get detail for that?
We have, we have ours, but when you look at UCOA...
No, can we see ours?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And can you tell me if we have 30 students...
And that's a ballpark.
Right, approximately 30 who are going out of district for Special Ed placements.
And out of district means not in the regions.
Right. How does that compare with other suburban districts of our size?
That's what they were saying, it's hard to get.
I don't know, to answer your question, but you have to be careful because this is such a unique area where kids, whether they have autism or whatever their needs are, varies greatly from town to town, from community to community. I mean, we could try to call Situate and Aragant at districts that are similar in size just to get a number, but I'm not, the validity of that number, there's a lot that goes into, you know, who needs those services.
But, but we need, I hear what you're saying, but we need to have some, we need to look at something. We need to feel like we're making...
What can we, I have a suggestion, but before we get to that, I was, I was gonna say, 2013 was sort of where we peaked for out-of-district tuitions. We know we dropped in 2014 and we know we're continuing that trend this year. So I'm expecting to see our number go down in the next two UCOWAs. So, you know...
And I, I hear, Bill, I hear what you're saying. You're saying we're unique and all I'm looking...
No, I'm not saying we're unique. I'm just saying that...
Well, our number is unique.
Well, I don't need to say that.
Well, no, I know what you mean.
Apparently everybody's unique.
I'm, I'm saying with Special Ed tuitions, not a district tuitions, it is unique based on the children you have and the needs they come to school with. That's hard to quantify outside of, yeah, we can say, you know, we can look at, we did, we looked at, well, we're at 20% and the state average was, is 17 a couple of years ago. We said, we're over-identifying and we're bringing that number down through the RTI process. So we are looking at hard, you know, that kind of number, but to say, well, how come we only have 30 and Situate has 20? I don't know how you can...
Well, I was just trying, and you couldn't do it, you couldn't do it per, for one district, but if you have five other districts our size and they all have 10 or nine to 12 and we have 30, that seems we need an explanation for. Or is it that our students, and maybe it's a combination, our students are going for the $80,000 placements where they also have 20 students, but they're all going to $15,000 placements? I don't know.
But you can't gauge, I mean, that's not something you can predict.
But, but we're just looking for the explanation for why our costs are so high.
The entire state has the same Special Ed laws that we do, the entire state. So if we're looking at state averages, we need to, our, our responsibility is to make sure we're spending our money as effectively and efficiently on the services that we can. And if there's something that make, that's what I said, is there's something that makes us unusual that drives that 1.8 million dollars, like we have more co-classrooms?
I believe, I don't believe we have more.
Or whatever it is. That's what I'm looking for. I'm not saying it's not okay.
I, I just think the, we're unique in that every district is unique regarding out-of-district placements. The question is, are we, the region, taking the appropriate steps at the IEP meetings to make sure that these students, if they're placed at Bradley here in Portsmouth or Bradley in East Providence or wherever their placement is, is it the appropriate placement? Many placements depend on, on the need of the child and there are only, you know, one place, you know, or, you know, and that place, as we talked about, says that's the tuition.
Right, yes, right. No, we know that.
And I can have Mrs. Craig come when we do talk more about it, you know, to kind of go through that with you, to, to kind of explain that process to you, at least so you can understand how they get there to wherever they are and you might understand it a little better. As far as our costs go, I believe our costs can be brought down through the monitoring of our staff and our aides. I, I believe for a district, I, I still believe we can find savings there and bring that, that overall number down, even the longer.
So, I think I finally have gotten my mind around this after listening to this discussion. And I guess it's that there's two contradictory issues that are both equally true. One is that we shouldn't really be deviating from the average, that our Rhode Island children are the same as Rhode Island children in districts of comparable size and socioeconomic status, if you will. So that this variance must have some sort of explanation.
Right.
But it is the nature of special education that you are deviating from the average and the more you deviate from that average, meaning that the, you know, the individual needs of that student, they're not average students. They are students that have specialized needs and the more you deviate from that average, it's almost, there's probably a directly proportional increase in cost. And so, I, I think that's maybe what Bill is saying. Perhaps what would be most useful is to actually see more specifically where those costs are broken down, not necessarily the total cost, but we're paying this much money to Bradley for, you know, this many students, not necess, you know, completely de-identified, but, you know...
Yeah, we can do that, that's...
We're sending this much money to Bradley, we're sending this much money to, you know, all the other meeting street or wherever it is they're going. And, and I think that Bill is on the right track, that we need to just make sure that, not that the child who needs that placement doesn't get that placement, but make sure that that placement is absolutely appropriate so that we are satisfying our fiduciary duty that...
Right, that's all I was saying.
That is the reason why that money is spent that way, is because that's the way that money has to be spent. Not necessarily, oh, we can't spend that much money because we're at variance from the average.
No, absolutely not.
So I think that might be the most useful thing, is to understand exactly where that money is going in, in some sense of, you know...
I'll also, right, on the second, we'll provide that and where, be it 5 foot of Bradley or whatever the number is.
Yeah, that's how we build the budget, so.
Right.
That's easy to get.
And I'll also, Mrs. Craig here, to kind of give tentative budget so you can see, we'll need less, you know, two less teachers, three less aides, and what the dollars are. And that will also restrict that.
Can you, just for me, Doug, you don't have to do it for everyone else. I want that 7628746, can I know where you put that when you send that to RIDE and UCOA data?
Which, I'm sorry, the number from...
The 7628746. When you report that, is that easy for you to tell me where that goes for RIDE reporting?
Oh, that's basically the intent of this report. Those are the, the accounts.
Those are the, so that's it. So this, this is where, okay, that's it, then that's fine.
That's why we gave it to you.
Nope, that's fine then.
Just keep in mind for, for non-in, out-of-district where these roll up, we're only, well, we're not significantly over the average. I mean, we, and we have had a trend of these increases in tuitions through 2013 and I think we're coming back more to the, more to the mean of the situation to be in. But I think it's a good starting point, look at specifically where our placements are and you can, and see some of the averages.
I think it's important for you to hear also from Sarah, how, how does a team determine that? Not to get it specific, but in other words, what, what triggers that you have to go out?
Well, I think Rachel did that when she was here and gave us that whole...
But if you, if you want...
I would, I would imagine it's not any different.
It's not, but I'm trying to provide you as much information as you would like.
And it's, I pulled the 2013% Special Ed to, I looked at Tiverton, Smithfield, Burrowville, Middletown, Portsmouth, North Smithfield, and we still are up at 18 compared to like 15, 16, 14.
Say that again, 18 what?
18%.
Population.
Population of Special Ed versus 15, 16, 15 and 14.
Okay.
And again, not to say that it shouldn't be 18, but I think that explains some of it because if you have a higher percentage, that's going to drive that number.
And again, if you went back even further, you'd see it was at 20.
It was 20 something, yeah.
Right, so it is, right. So that would also bring down, because we're above the average just with the number of kids. And we recognize that, we felt that some were being over-identified two or three years ago. We're doing our best to, you know, contain that and make sure people are ident, students are identified properly.
And I think that's reflected in the decreasing out-of-district tuition that we've seen also. Some of those students are not being able to be in, in town, in programs.
That's correct. That's what was, would you like a list of like the, also the programs that we have?
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah, no, that would be good.
Yeah, so we can see where they are and what age and all that.
Yes.
That would be good.
So we're all kind of conceptually looking at the same thing.
Right, we know exactly what we have.
So...
So December 2nd.
You picked this topic up again, yeah.
So we'll pick up, we'll pick up the, what, the non-instruction, that we need more detail for the 3365 per pupil costs. And then we'll pick up Special Ed again.
And I will have...
If you've mapped and you have some...
Well, I think we're going to need that by December 2nd so you can have...
Yeah. Oh, that's true. No, you're right.
Recommendations to...
In sport.
Bring up the map.
What you mapped, yes.
Right. How to allocate new, new resources or additional resources.
It's just like work. I do this all day. I do it all night.
And you do it well. Thank you. That'll be good.
Some of us are not as fast with this spreadsheet.
No, I know. I'm sorry. I forget that.
Take us a little bit.
I'll slow down. I'm sorry. Just give us a page number, a column number.
Yeah, if you can go kind of fast there.
I'm sorry.
Page and line number. It'll be okay.
I'm sorry.
Get that, that sidetracked.
I forget. Not everyone looks at numbers all day long.
Okay.
Perfect. That was a good way to summarize it however though, Jerry.
Yes. And if anyone in the public wants to see it, there's 72 pages in the whole report.
I have it.
And I have it right here. And if anyone wants to look at it, it's online, online. They can go look at every single penny and where it's spent. I don't think anyone else does that. Not in any place else I know. Just in education.
Oh, this UCOA data really is great.
It's good though. And we were one of the pilot programs, right?
I like it.
We were.
I think that's why we've got a lot of our cleanup done before anyone else.
I, yeah.
Which is good. I know some haven't. They're just starting it and they're, they're in a mess.
Anything else? So I think that's what we, we had subject, we had out-of-district and then we, or we had Special Ed and then other, right? I think that was our three areas?
Well, was, wasn't just...
I think those are the big ones that we...
There was out-of-district that's not related to Special Ed.
Well, that's, is that, that's the other, right?
That would show up in non-instruction.
That's the one I asked for detail on. Yeah, the non-instruction.
That'll be good.
We'll give you a list of...
So, so Met School tuition is considered non-instruction?
No, no, it's out-of-district. We were jumping before, between the tubes.
Yeah, we're talking about two different things.
In Rogers, in Rogers.
You almost have to say, I'm talking about line item packs or where do these tuitions?
So Rogers and Met are in what line item?
They're considered with the out-of-district special ed.
Okay, okay. Right. And so what's left in non-instruction?
I will find out next time.
Transportation, it's all, it's all...
It'll be exciting.
School life.
Retire, right, retire beds.
Oh, yeah, right. Okay.
And then buildings is the Rogers.
Okay.
And would you like dollar amounts, I mean, besides this little line item, but how much it is?
The per pupil.
Do you want to see the per pupil or do you want to see actual dollars?
No, I think, I think I agree.
Well, I want to tie to what's here.
All right, so we'll just give you the list.
You can go beyond that if you want to, but I like to be able to tie to the numbers because otherwise, I, I like to independently verify what you've given me. Not because of you, that's just the way I do things.
We're looking at the lowest level of detail if you're looking at the subject report, so I kind of have to jump over.
As long as I can get there, that's fine.
If we can get through answering Deb's questions, the budget process will be easier.
There you go.
Oh, no. John Souza's going to be fine.
I'll put you up with that.
Have another, have another finance guy. All right.
Okay, is there anything else?
So at the next meeting, when I talk about, I'll be, okay, I'll just...
Very exciting.
Got to start somewhere, Bill.
That's right, that's right. Very good.
We can fund that. We know how to fund that.
I'm hoping.
No, we already got the...
Yeah.
All right, so motion to adjourn?
No, it's fine.
Second.